You have a question? Was that?
That was that just.
Okay.
Right, no, I understand. No, for sure, but the more controversial one.
I don't know where he's going with that.
What, me?
John, it's so good to see you.
That's like the third time you said that this evening.
Right.
I feel better now that Don's here to connect.
I do. I don't like it at floor level because I'm too short to like it. But, but I feel like I'm always. I need like a pillow on my chair so I can.
That should be a sale.
Right, wait, this, this, this whole thing has to.
Like even if it came down a couple of inches, but.
Or have, have, have monitors that are.
At a table like that.
For you? For the judge.
I was a young prosecutor.
Where we going with this already?
Have recess monitors in the, out of the countertop hanging up. Eliminating.
I made you that way.
Because I've been scared a couple of times. I like this.
In my opinion, that light should be right next to that floor. Right in front of this floor.
But then if they need to speak to the screen, they need a way to travel to the screen.
Yeah.
Or a laser pointer.
We find we could provide that.
I'm asking the cursor rail on the screen itself. Have they had a screen right at the podiums?
Oh, yeah.
And just happy reusable patterned whips underneath.
All right.
That was a joke.
And that's why I just love you on this floor.
Give us a moment.
That's why you look.
Well, we all get passes. I just do it for the soldier.
You gotta show them how to work this one. You're always looking at yours because you always got everything. Which makes it easier. I just look over at yours.
Very good.
That was on.
Um, yeah.
We've got more, a few more.
Was that?
I'll just try and mark his stand.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the town of Webster. June 11th, 2024. We have a total of two table matters that we're going to be reviewing today and one scheduled matter for today. We have, not, not that today is gonna hopefully take too long, but we do have, reserve the right that at 10pm to table any remaining matters. I'm hoping that we don't go that long today. Additionally, there's a five-minute limit to public comment periods of any particular item. I do have a proof of legal application for all items here. That call for attendance.
Mrs. Bolo.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. Short.
Here.
Mr. Santola.
Here.
Mr. Lagnan.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
All right, that, uh, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Just with that, move on to our first item, which is 671 Willow Lane accessory structure.
Do you want me to reread it into the record?
Sure. Yeah, please.
671 Willow Lane accessory structure located at 671 Willow Lane. Applicant Brian Bishoping is requesting area variances to allow a side setback less than what is required and to allow the placement of an accessory structure to be nearer to the front property line than the rear line of the main residence associated with the construction of a 500 square foot detached wood framed structure on a .46 acre parcel having SPL number 065.13-2-11 located in an R3 single-family residential district under sections 350-12 and 350-36 of the code of the town of Webster.
How's it going?
Good evening. Going well, thank you. How are you?
Uh, will you give us an update from last time?
Yes.
Last month.
So the graphic that's up there is a depiction of the three alternatives, the, um, tough to point to it, but the upper rightmost one is where the prefer, a little more to the right, right there is where the application stands and then the board did ask us to identify where the power lines were, the swing distance and the height of those. So the actual measurement out there on that piece of paper is four foot 11 is what we measured in terms of the swing that it could do. So that gives us the buffer and then the board asked us to look at two other alternatives of either keeping the five foot and pushing it back as far as we could to avoid those wires and that's what the one is, the building sliding back and that pushes it back about 17 and a half feet. And likewise, we looked at it as eliminating the side setback and pushing it 15 feet off of the lot line. But of course, because of the diagonal electrical wires, that's why it's pushed a little forward towards Willow Lane. So I, I hope that addresses the, the request from the board. There should be a photo that went along with this, yes. It's tougher to see this one. This is from the road, but, um, right after the meeting, we did go out and stake that out. Those were measured of those three locations and he color coded the ribbons. So hopefully everybody got a chance to go out there and see it. It obviously doesn't depict height, but we're just looking at the area of placement for each of those alternatives.
Can you go back to the previous graphic? So looking at this, the original option required side and front setback. Option one also requires side and, and front setback, but it's further back from, from the front of the house, obviously. And option two on here would only require the front setback variance, correct? Side, it would not require the side setback.
Correct.
Okay. I did get a chance to go out there and thank you for staking that out. It was very helpful.
Good.
What this graphic doesn't show, but the photo does show is that there is a fairly mature maple tree. Yep, right there, which is, I don't know, five feet plus or minus into option one. So that maple tree, if they decide to go with option one or, you know, that is considered, that maple tree would have to be removed to accommodate that. And I believe, depending on my conversations, there's concerns with some of the other options as well with that maple tree.
That's correct. So the concern and, and one of the main reasons, or a other reason why Brian would like to have that pushed up is not only the electric wires, as we discussed last meeting. It's estimated to be around $7,500 to relocate the telecommunication wires and the electric so that the building could be code compliant put in the back. But in addition to that, you'd have around $4,500 to take down that tree. It's his last tree. It does provide some shade to the neighbors, but even pushing it back further, you worry about the, the root structure that might be down there. So having a buffer off of that would definitely help to keep that alive.
Any questions from the board?
Do you have a preferred option?
Uh, well, of course, the, the preferred one is the application as it came in, but to minimize variance and understanding that if, I know we're trying to keep it brief here. I do have a presentation if the board wants it where I could call out some of the things we're looking for and, and just to help you document your decision-making and your finding statement of why you want it. If you want it, I can hand it to you. Not sure if it's sufficient or not, but to just go through a couple of them. The preferred one would be the one, five foot off the property line, just to keep it off of that side to put it towards that hedgerow that's in there. But maybe not putting it right in as far up to the front face or the front plane, yes, right there, but pushing it back. So kind of a blending between the preferred location and the furthest back one. So maybe splitting the difference between those and moving it back. Ryan, you can speak to that better. How far back would you be willing to, or would you be interested in, in minimizing this variance to pushing it back towards the front, back towards the back of the building?
So the distance from the proposed location to the tree right now is nine, almost exactly nine feet. So I do want to go three feet back and give that six foot buffer for any limbs coming down or anything like that. It is a maple tree and they are not as nice to structures if branches come off. If there were a pine tree, I'd have a different view.
Have you completely exhausted the thought of using an attached garage to the existing building?
This, this is definitely the preferred.
Preferred, but, preferred, but the other is definitely an option if.
Uh, it is more costly, yes. It's a lot, a lot more expensive. So then, uh, it's something that would be greater value.
Costly with respect to moving the power lines or the construction itself?
Construction itself.
And, and just to clarify that, sir, he, by the town code, he's allowed to have an accessory structure. We're just talking about the variances. So it's a good question that he should entertain, especially on the economics of it. But he has permitted a shed and an accessory structure. So I just wanna point out that clarification.
He is permitted that.
Yeah.
Obviously, when it complies the code.
Correct. So that would mean he would have to put the accessory structure back.
Asking for relief.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good clarification. So to be clear even to Brian is that would be a permanent structure that he would have the additional cost of relocating a tree and, and the electric wires.
Any other questions?
I don't know. In the, in the neighborhood, are there any other similar structures, two-story?
So, um, in terms of two stories, I didn't search out that, but in terms of accessory structures, I did search that out in the 403 unit house zone that you were given last month. There's actually 135 accessory structures. And just around the corner, I did see a detached structure that was, I don't have the square footage, nor do I have the height, but once again, it's relative to that house's roof line. It was, their, their garage is detached and, and that would count as an accessory structure. So there is one around the corner that's similar to it. Once again, it's not necessarily a height that I'm reporting or a two-story, but it's to match the ridge line of the house that's there.
Will this structure have enough space to store everything that's outside currently?
As far as.
Can you get to the mic so we can hear you?
Yeah, what, sorry, what is, uh?
Any like the tractors, the trailers, the?
So both fit. The garage door has been sized, so the boat can fit inside, the tractor can fit inside, the snowmobiles can fit inside. So between that and the attached garage of my house, the car can go inside, you know, my attached garage of the house. So the snowmobile trailer does not fit inside. That, that can stay in the driveway.
And I think you said last month that his goal is to take some of his grandparents' belongings that were in the basement and start relocating those to some other storage instead of in the basement. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yep. The man door, the overhead door and, I don't know if it's a window or a sliding glass door on the second floor, based on the image that I'm looking at, those are all proposed to be facing the street.
So facing Willow Lane would be a garage door, a man door, and that is the second floor access for larger items. Door is not necessarily set in stone on the front. If I have enough room at the back by keeping the structure closer to Willow Lane, then I can move that door to the back of the structure and put a window up front. So that the drawing is preliminary. It's until I have an exact of where I can place the building, I won't know exactly what the layout is.
Okay. So it's a, that's a, another door up top is what that is for larger items to come, go in and out.
Correct.
Essentially.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Not yet.
No? All right. With that, um, we're gonna open it up to, to the public. So, so anybody here wanna speak for or against this project? As a reminder, we have a five-minute limitation on.
I don't have slides today, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
At the last meeting, this issue was tabled. When it came to, should we vote tonight or should we, um, table it? And Brian would provide answers for some of the design and how the building would be constructed. Would it match the, um, siding on his house so that, you know, things would look right? What is being proposed here tonight puts me in the position of looking at Brian's house, his attached garage, the aging and deteriorating airstream. Then there'll be a small patch of land, maybe, if that's not where the doghouse goes. And then we're gonna have this big structure and I'm gonna look at two garage doors and a man door. Two garages, rose by any other name, smells sweet, isn't allowed in code in my neighborhood. I ask you to take the interest of the person not seeking a variance, wanting to go and be in compliance with the town code to deal with that. As I spoke with Mr. Artuso last week sometime, I could live with the aging camper being gone, which gets junkier looking by the moment and no proof of licensure as he was asked to provide several years ago. If that was removed, if the building he was requesting was rotated 45 degrees, so that 45 or 90, so that the entrance, his garage door and man door were facing his house and that the exterior of the utility building be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And this is, like I said, this is a well-developed, um, mature suburb and to start this, this shows no respect for the nature of the property that I bought, not seeking to have a huge structure. I apologize for not having something in print. I have not felt well for several days. But do you kind, do you hear what I'm saying?
Yep.
Do you have any questions?
I don't. Anybody else have any questions for Jim?
So it would be those two contingencies that I would wish that, like I said, so that he deals with his driveway doors that way. And, um, or another thing is he could move his trailers behind the house. There's room for that. So thank you very much and I appreciate your courtesy throughout this process.
Thank you.
Josh, what's the, there's no code issues with respect to the trailer?
Town code allows a recreational vehicle to be parked in the side yard and one in the rear yard and one in the front yard on the driveway.
Was there some reference to licensing or registration or is there, is there any requirement in the code on it?
Um, not to my knowledge.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Thank you. Any additional questions back at the board? Or sorry, public session's not, not closed yet. Anybody else want to speak for or against the property? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jim Ballitt. I live at 1278 Mill Creek, which is the adjoining property with, with Brian's. And just wanted, you know, clarify our position. Brian shared all the changes and things he's gone through, variances and how he's looked for. Communicated everything with us as we went along. From our perspective, we see it as improvements to a lot of the areas of, you know, what we understand from his property. The, even taking care of the drainage, the drainage between the houses and that was a good, was a good plan because it helped us as well. And I think, you know, as far as from our perspective of where we are, everybody has a, a, a structure in their backyard for, for putting things in. So, you know, we look at this as, as more of the same. It doesn't, it doesn't present a, a problem for us on our side of the fence. And, you know, just in, you know, when 20, 2009, we put a shed in our yard. We had the requirement of 15 feet from the property line. I wish we had had that back to five feet where, where we hoped it would be because that would help us a lot. And I'm sure that would help Brian in his, his options as well. But we just wanted to portray our, our support, our, our, no objections to what's, what's going on.
Thank you. Any other, uh, public for or against the project?
We did receive a comment online. I don't know if you'd like me to read that.
Yeah, would you mind?
Sure. This comment was received from a Richard Eder from 1244 Cloverwood Drive. Yes. So this comment's from Richard Eder at 1244 Cloverwood Drive, which is around the corner from 671 Willow Lane. While I can't directly see this property from mine, I drive and walk by it every day. I am opposed to the variance as submitted for the following reasons. I can sympathize with the applicant in terms of needing more space for his lawn tractor and snowmobiles. However, the proposed two-story, 500 square foot structure seems to be overkill for that use. A simple extension of the existing garage either rearward or to the north side would easily accomplish this. A two-story structure is not in line with the other storage structures in our neighborhood. Most are in the range of 150 square feet or so. None of them are two stories. Given that the applicant has a home-based electrical business, I can't help but suspect this structure will be used primarily for that purpose. It will also not reduce the amount of vehicles already in the yard, such as the deteriorating airstream trailer, the snowmobile trailer and the boat. If this application was for a single-story structure of a lesser size, I don't think there would be much concern. It would better fit aesthetically and it wouldn't interfere with the overhead electrical lines that supply the house. So it could be relocated and not require the variances. It would also not have as much of a visual impact for the homeowner directly across the street on Willow. Thank you for your consideration.
All right. With that, the public session is closed. Bring it back to the board. Any other questions at the board?
All, all the board members that were voting today were present at the previous application.
Uh, last.
I was not here.
I would.
Okay, so all other formal.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Have you, have you reviewed the minutes you've gone through?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so you're fully up to speed from the original presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're good to go.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Comments?
I know it was helpful for me to visit the property with the multiple locations staked out. A, because looking at the survey map doesn't give you the location of the trees and the wires in real time as opposed to just the straight line of the wire. And it gave me a much better feel for the impact of the size and location of the building with respect to all of the contiguous neighbors on their property. So thank you. I do appreciate the applicant and his engineer going through that work for us because it did certainly help my perspective. But I'm not sure as far as location yet.
Okay.
I could, I could see advantages to, I could see advantages to the existing location. I could see advantages to bringing it in 15 feet from the setback, except I, I know we asked the applicant to consider eliminating the one variance by, by bringing it in 15 feet. The downside of that is now that I've pulled it out of the hedgerow, it's much more.
Visible.
Visible.
Yep.
Which didn't, I mean, I, I kinda knew it, but didn't see it until it was actually physically staked.
Yeah, I mean, even in this photo here, I mean, you look at the white stakes right in front of you. Half of that building is inside the hedgerow.
Right.
You know, granted that hedgerow will probably be cut back to a certain degree and whatnot, but, um, you know, the, the black stakes are right out in the open and the white and the black, red stakes are about halfway into, into that hedgerow.
Right.
So I'm, I'm of the same, same opinion. You know, the zoning code allows the height of the structure. The zoning code allows the square footage of the structure. Realistically, we're looking at the location. There are wires in the back that are preventing, um, preventing this from truly fitting, um, in that particular location due to the wires. You know, and that's, you know, eliminating one of the variance requirements is great, but it puts a big, big structure very visible than at that.
Well, it's gonna be visible.
Regardless.
Regardless whether it's five or 15 feet off.
Sure.
It's not like the hedgerow, what remains of it is gonna be, you know, redirecting your, your eyesight there. It's, I, I think it would, it works better from my standpoint with a five-foot setback into the, into the hedgerow. My concern is, uh, like you said, it's allowed minus the relief he's seeking. But we need, if, you know, we were to vote on it, I'd wanna see it be as close to matching the exterior of the existing house as possible as far as the look. Not necessarily the exact same material, but giving it a more, as much of a residential look as a two-story accessory structure can have. Which would, you know, match, like try and match the shingles, put gutters on it, put some, even if you have to put fake aesthetics on it. I don't care if it's a real window or not, just something that breaks up this monolithic slab of a, of a facade besides, besides the door.
Sure.
I, and I, my, my concern is that that's overreaching our ability as a board to dictate architectural elements. So that, that, that's my concern though, but, uh, just because like I said, if, if, if the board were to entertain it, I, I would like to see it, um, be as aesthetically pleasing as possible.
Not just the whole door.
Right. And that's why I think it also doesn't, we, we have no power to do anything about the other issues that may, that one of, some of the residents may feel are occurring on the side. We're not, obviously there's photos that, that are there and whether we approve this or not, there's still going to be that same issue.
Sure. Right. Trailers.
Right, I mean.
Is there, right, it's a lot, right?
We, so, the way I see it is, we can't really, I can't really look at that as being, unless they're all going to be in this accessory structure, it really doesn't matter because they have a right to keep those.
Mm-hmm.
Unless, like I said, unless Josh said the code, you know, needs to be licensed or something like that, but if, if it doesn't, then allowing the shed is just gonna have one more thing to add to that very busy side yard right now.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the one thing that I think the applicant expressed to us is there is a, um, material, I guess I'll call it. There's, there's quite a bit in that side yard with the old shed that is.
Right.
Kind of, it's very old. It's seen better days. But that would be coming out and that side area would get cleaned up if I'm still understanding correctly.
Yes.
Um, so it would, I, I think the building would neaten the overall appearance. The camper's still going to be there. You're allowed to have a camper. But if it gets some of the other miscellaneous items out of sight, it, I, I think it benefits.
I, I agree.
Both the applicant and the neighbors.
I agree, but there are certain things that we don't have any control over.
Right, we, we can't say you can't have what the code allows you to have, but.
Including an up to a five hundred square foot accessory structure.
Correct.
That's unless the applicant consents.
Does that also apply to architectural?
Sure. They may not be able to condition it, but they may be willing to sweeten the pot.
Got you.
Problem I may have in is the two-story. You got a five hundred square foot footprint.
Mm-hmm.
Two stories. You got a thousand square foot. That's larger than a bunch of houses. You essentially have two home-sized structures on that lot. I'm just having a problem with the two-story.
Does the, Josh, does the code prohibit number of floors or it, and if the square footage is the footprint, it is not the floor square footage, correct?
Can't be high, cannot be higher than the, uh, than the main structure.
Correct. That's true. Right.
And there's a limit. Where is it? And the height is defined, it cannot exceed twenty feet in height.
Yeah, and that's, that's not to the ridge, that's to, like, the midpoint.
Well, it's the average.
Right.
Right.
Right, that's.
Some mean height.
It's the mean.
So it's gonna be about three or four feet on top of that.
Yep, which, I mean, this is shown twenty-two foot two.
Right.
So. Okay. So again, unfortunately, right, I mean, the height is dictated by the.
Yeah.
At all, so.
It's personal.
Yeah, I hear ya. I, I, I kind of agree, right? Now, you know, half acre, I think these are half acre plots in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Having a accessory structure, five hundred square feet go up, that's twenty-two feet tall. Definitely understand it. Other, um, any other comments? Yeah.
With respect to, uh, some of the, uh, aesthetics that the board has discussed, i- is there anything that the applicant wants to comment upon as to what they are willing or not willing to do? Strictly voluntary, you, you know, it's, it's, doesn't have to be a requirement of your presentation, but the, uh, comments made by the board, I don't want to not allow you to comment as that is something that you're in agreement to doing or not in agreement to do.
So, like, like I said before, the, the drawings that I provided are preliminary. I don't have a final, this is exactly what it's gonna look like. Because of location, obviously I can, I can swing doors, um, you know, the second floor door, I can swing that to the back and put a window there that's actually gonna, currently I was planning on putting it at the back, but I could flip-flop those. I just don't, can't make that decision right now without a location.
What about the materials, the appearance of the building? The board has talked about, uh, consistent with the exterior look of the, of the home. Is that something that you're willing to stipulate to or something?
So the exterior of the home is.
Let me chime in on that.
Let, 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 let me just finish.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that something you're willing to stipulate to or something that you'd rather leave outside the application?
So, because the exterior of the existing home is most likely going to be upgraded, not at the same time as the structure, but.
Right, so I, I don't need to cut you off.
Yep.
It's kind of a yes or no question.
So I think what he's gonna ask, he wants them to complement each other, but they may not match at the exact same time because he may build this first with the color scheme that he wants and then invest in resurfacing the facade of the existing structure.
If I may add to, our concern is that it's gonna be a, a metal pole barn.
Right.
Looking structure that does not fit within the residential neighborhood. Are you willing to utilize materials and design aesthetics that provide a residential look to the new structure that would, um, complement the residential neighborhood that you're in?
I haven't looked at any surfaces that are, are available right now. I know the general idea of what I'm looking for, not as far as the finish, but how I want the building to be constructed, I guess. Is the, uh, you know, for insulation and for.
What's the siding gonna be?
I don't know. The, currently, my, my house is metal siding, so.
So I think what they're getting at is, you're not planning on putting in an industrial-style metal-sided, rimmed roofed pole barn. The architectural idea that Mr. Lowson took together is that it would be constructed of some kind of materials. It could be metal studs, whatever it is, but it will be residential in neighbor, uh, neighborhood or character and then be constructed in that fashion. Not industrial-looking or pre-manufactured, but rather.
Again, I don't, I don't have a finished look to the structure.
But.
He hasn't gotten that far yet.
Are you amenable to?
I, I think the answer is no. It's pretty clear to me.
Yeah. Understand that you don't have materials selected. I guess, are you amenable to different options?
Committing to.
Committing to.
Committing to residential-type materials similar to those found in the neighborhood now, which would mean.
I don't know what those are, but, yeah.
You live in the neighborhood. I mean, is it gonna be siding? If it's gonna be siding, what, are you gonna, are you gonna have metal siding on it?
I could, yes.
Like, like I said.
I, I don't know.
I just, I don't need to make sure that I understand his, his viewpoint.
All right. I, I currently have at my residence a twenty by twenty-four accessory structure. It's got two garage doors. It's also got windows. It's sided the same color as the house. It's roofed with the same, uh, shingles as the house. So when you drive by, it doesn't stand out as a hot red metal pole barn. It's a, a gray and white building that looks just like the house next door and just like the house. It's, it's on the same property as. Can you make it look like it belongs in a neighborhood where it, it has some softer design features? Or are you planning on putting a, a steel pole barn, which I guess technically you're allowed to except that there's no location on your lot that complies, but, but would look much more industrial and less welcoming in a residential neighborhood?
Yes, I'm looking, definitely looking for, obviously, if metal roof, but it may be the metal shingles. So I, I, again, I don't know what the product is, but yes, I am looking to have the house and the barn eventually match.
Accessory structure.
Uh, correct, accessory structure. Um, so yes, the two are eventually gonna match, but currently the house is a faded coordinate.
Right, and I understand the house is faded and needs.
Different shades of coordinate, so that needs to be upgraded as well.
Right.
So yes, they are gonna complement each other.
Let me ask this question. Um. I'm not saying this would occur, but if it did occur, um, what happens when it gets, if it gets put up and it is a metal? We, we give the variance and moves forward and ends up being metal?
Well, and I don't even know that I wanna stipulate not metal because there are metal buildings that are attractive.
And metal roofs are totally acceptable, so it's, it's.
Industrial, I'll say industrial, but, sorry, just, you know.
Right, but.
Something that doesn't complement the residential neighborhood.
That, right, that if it were on its own, would stick out like a sore thumb.
Yep.
Because it doesn't match the existing characteristics of the general surrounding area. And, you know, I'm not even looking at materials much as the look.
Just, yeah.
I mean, that's what I think we're looking at. I, if it's metal and it looks good.
Right.
And I, I don't think, I'm opposed to metal. I'm opposed to some, I'm also opposed, or corrugated metal or even T, T one eleven I'd be opposed to as well.
Right, that's right.
Um, so that's, that's my concern is that we, if, if you're going to approve any of the relief he's requested, it's gotta really, really fit in with that neighborhood for me to feel comfortable to, to vote for something like that.
Well, and I, I can't.
If that's your point of view, then we should ask for an architectural, uh, drawing of that because perceptions, perception, what you're perceiving the applicant is describing is di- maybe different from what I'm perceiving.
I, I agree, but with lack of the applicant providing any more information this evening, I don't, don't know what to do.
Well, and I would be reluctant, uh, as, as a homeowner, I would be reluctant to hire somebody to design a building for me without having an approval. Um, I think the applicant has stated that the upstairs door can go on the back and then you can soften the front look with, I don't know, a pair of windows or something. Um. I mean, a garage door and a man door is not out of character. But. But the upstairs door I definitely wanna see on back just because then it, otherwise it looks, it looks more barn-like and while it used to be old farms, it's not anymore, so.
Has been for a long time.
Is there an estimate of the cost in the application?
Uh.
I thought there was.
No.
Requiredment of the.
Yeah, it's not his application.
That may, that may address the issues.
This first original.
I thought you gave him one that had, um.
Did you give him an estimate?
Yes.
Just what did Lowson give him?
Josh, I have a question with respect to planning board approval because I think maybe we're beating a horse dead twice. Um, the planning board has to review any accessory structure in excess of five hundred square feet. If it's a two-story building, I technically have a thousand square feet of floor space. Do they look at? Does the code reflect floor space or does the code reflect?
Area.
Area. Cause I know I had to go to the planning board for mine, which is slightly smaller than this.
It's listed as area.
Yeah, um, traditionally, it's, it's the footprint of the structure that's calculated. Um, I will say if this was one square foot larger, it would go before the planning board and they would require that you provide the materials. Um, they actually require that you bring in samples of the materials, so, um.
Isn't that, isn't that going to be a component of the cost of the structure?
The cost?
Right, the, the cost of the structure is a, is a requirement under the code. In terms of providing.
For the building permit.
For, for. Well, yeah, for the building permit. And for our approval here. It is a field on our application that was left blank. Well, I think under the code, it's a, it's required, isn't it, Matt?
Yeah, it's under B.
Right, uh, B four, right? And what is the cost of the structure?
What you're asking. It was estimated twenty thousand.
Okay, and the estimate is, uh, an aggregate of what components? Materials.
Material labor.
Right, and what's the material?
The, the wood, the insulation, the, you know, start to finish.
And, and does that, does that include the, the, the siding of the building?
Yes.
So you, I guess I'm confused.
I, I didn't pick out, I just was.
You're telling me on the one hand, you don't know what it's gonna be made of or how it's gonna look, but yet you got an estimate that covers the price.
So usually those cost estimates are order of magnitude where it could be vinyl siding, could be aluminum siding, could be.
Right, but if the, if the board wants to see the itemized estimate, you don't have it, right?
Correct.
All right, so, but you need to have it.
We need to have a total cost of it, yeah.
Right, well, I guess it's up to the board to decide whether it's just an aggregate number or they wanna see the content. So, I mean, the board could take the position tonight that the application is not complete.
Right.
And agree to table it again.
Right.
And maybe by that time, your applicant might have some more concrete answers as to what the building might look like. And then the board at that point might be a little more comfortable.
So, so to, to backtrack a little bit of where he was going, cause my friend is more on the industrial side. He's blocking at the metal siding part because there is horizontal.
Oh, what I'm saying, is he, is he an electrician?
Yes.
All right. You know, his answer seemed a little ambiguous for a guy in the construction trade as to this stage of the process, not knowing what this building's gonna look like, when he knows the applicant's neighbors want to know. It's not a big ask, it's not a heavy lift for a guy in the business. It just doesn't seem, uh, like he's being genuine about it.
Wow, um, I, I can't speak to that one, but he.
I'm just telling you what I'm hearing, that's all.
I got you.
You know, if, if, if he said he was, you know, a baker making cupcakes and doesn't know anything about construction, I guess I would buy it.
Got you.
But it sounds like, it sounds a little evasive to me.
Okay.
And he doesn't have that part of the application complete.
Correct.
So he's asking us to make a leap, but he doesn't wanna help us.
I got you. So he is looking for the variance first before he finally, because you did hire an architect to put those first concepts.
I did, just, just to give us a footprint, general layout, I, I have gone the next step further to get all the specs for the building.
So, so to put a question mark on here, what type of roof is on your building right now, on your house?
I have a actual single, single roof.
No, what type of, is it a hip? Is it a gam- uh, gambrel roof, is it?
The house is a ga- gambrel, gambrel roof.
I, I wanna see if he could answer it.
My existing is it, yes.
So he's got a gambrel roof, that this structure could match that with a gambrel roof, just facing in a particular fashion.
But you're, I understand you're asking us for a variance that, you know, yes, the, it's a, it's a, um, you know, it's a location or a site variance, so it makes it a lot easier for us to grant that, that variance when the questions we're asking have answers to them.
Yep.
I understand you haven't taken it, have not taken it to the next step, right? It's, it's a leap of faith on your end to pay an architect, to select materials, to get a quote, to continue to go down that path without having the variance, but it's also a leap of faith for us then to grant a variance not knowing any of that information either. And at the end of the day, that's the crossroads we're at. We're, we wanna help you to a certain degree, but we also want our answers to be able to say, yeah, you know what? It's not going to, you know, negatively affect the aesthetics of the neighborhood. It's not going to, uh, have any adverse effects. But the questions, you know, my colleagues and I, board members and I are asking, you don't have the answers to right now. And get where you're at, but we need those answers to make a decision.
I. I honestly think it would need to go before the planning board. So we can determine the location, but I think the planning board would have to approve the design. When, when I get assessed on the, the square footage of my house, it counts the upstairs and the downstairs and I pay taxes on the whole thing.
Yep.
So I think the code calls for five hundred square feet or more in the. So, I think the code calls for five hundred square feet or more, and this is technically gonna be a thousand square feet, because it's a two-story building. Which then, that gives the applicant the approval for their variance at a location.
And the estimates.
And then allows them to work with an architect to get the actual design, because now they know they have permission to place the building, and then can work that information out.
As long as we legally can make them, push them into that.
The, the code, the code says square feet, and if it's a two-story building, it's more than five hundred square feet.
I, I understand, but Josh just said that it's based on area, not your footprint, uh.
Well, that's how.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't specify that.
Right, it's not specified in the code.
It says square footage. And I know I had to go before the planning board for mine, which would be stack of five hundred square feet.
So, let's, let me, let, 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 let me ask you a question. Is the applicant, uh, will the applicant consent to taking this to the planning board for determination, um, per, per the planning board code?
So, so, I'm confused on it, cuz is it, we've been guided by the town that it's five hundred square feet or less, doesn't require that stuff, so.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that the code has, I, I'm not saying that.
The ambiguity.
But.
That, that, right, so, so th- this is why I said earlier, right?
Yep.
We can, the applicant can consent to do things, or we can get an illegal tug of, or we could make you do something you don't think, you can sue the town.
Right. Yeah, we don't, we don't.
Here's what I'm saying, a- at the end of the day, right, I, I have to assume that the applicant, in all things being even, wants to be a good neighbor, right? And there are some neighbors that are in agreement with the way it stands, there's other neighbors that really aren't opposing the structure, but it's where it's positioned and how it looks. In, in effort to get that right, not only for the applicant, but the neighbors, legal requirements aside. Is the applicant willing to go to the planning board to get their input and approval? If you say no, that's, that, that's fine, then the, but this board can do whatever it decides to do, I'm just asking.
Yeah. So, we're not getting into that definition of the square foot, but would you be willing to put a plan, whether you get a plan board? But, but, I will voice the concern the applicant has, cuz he is new to this part of, even though he has built things throughout the state, is the procedure to get this type of application, um, has been cumbersome, he, he, there's been missed publication dates, so he has, he's losing time this whole time, at the same time he's getting written up by the building department for having things in his yard, so he's trying to rectify that, but at the same time, he's getting strung along month after month, so, but I.
Pardon me.
Not positive on his answer.
Does, does anybody on this board object to reviewing their architectural drawings or what they're proposing?
He hasn't submitted architectural drawings.
Well, I understand, but, yeah, should he go to the planning board, he would need to provide that.
Correct.
Does anyone, any member of this zoning board have any objections of making that review?
No.
And do you feel comfortable in making that review?
Real quick, can I ask a question real quick, Josh, what is the cost threshold for a structure to need architectural plans? Isn't there a dollar amount, a square footage amount?
Twenty thousand dollars is the dollar amount.
Okay, so, so that's how your twenty thousand came up in the architect. So, um, in all likelihood, if this cost escalates because of material selection and things like that, I think it would behoove you to go to the planning board, get their input, and get through that, um, but it's up to you.
That's the proper procedure, yeah.
But at the same time, on this procedure, I, I just wanna hone this one in, I, I wanna make sure, if we come back to the variances here, we're here to talk about variances.
Correct.
Area variances, and the height is allowed, the square footage is allowed, this is just putting it to the planning board for a review side of it.
So, so I, I.
I feel like, to be honest, I feel like we're going beyond the scope of the variances that are being tied to this land.
Yes and no.
And talking about things that.
Yes and no, right, at the end of the day, we have to take into account a lot of different components for a variance. And the size of the building, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, all of that, that, we have to take into account. We get to say, yes, you're getting a variance, or no, you're not getting a variance, based on the information that is provided to us. There's a lot of information that we don't have, we've asked a lot of questions, we don't have answers to. So, I understand what you're saying, it's about the variance, we're here to give you or, or not give you a variance, but we need information to be able to do that. So, I understand where you're coming from. Again, I also read the code, it says five hundred square feet in area, to me, that's not the footprint, that is the building size, that's my opinion. It sounds like, Brian, what I heard you say is that, um, you are open to, um, going forward with the planning board to get the, the planning board's approval? Um, if, uh, I apologize, is it the planning board, is it us first, then the planning board?
Yes.
All right, so, if, if that is the case, what I'm hearing, and, is that we can make a vote on the, uh, location contingent upon you getting planning board approval? So, if it goes, if it goes this route, we, we review, we, we make our, our vote, if we agree, and you get the variance, then you would have to go to the planning board to get their approval for the materials that you don't know yet. The height, the aesthetics, and all the other components, in the location that this board ends up deciding.
Now, to be clear, the planning board, he's also gonna have to address site placement, drainage, the seeker elements that they do.
Yep. That's right.
I just want a clarification here, if we're doing that, it sounds like we're changing how the code is written, so we may need another variance.
No, we'll, we're, we're gonna approve it based on one of your options.
Well, sorry, what would the other variance be?
So, if you're changing the definition of the five hundred square foot, um, oh, never mind, because that would be going, we're going to the planning board.
Correct, yep.
Never mind, never mind.
And as far as the placement.
Yep.
Well, if, if we were to vote on it and grant you relief, it would be based on a specific setback.
Right, and they would, the, the planning board's gonna send it back to you, is what I'm thinking.
And they'll, and the planning board will have to, um.
Place it based on that setback.
Based on that setback.
Right.
So, uh, it's not really tying your hand, they will either approve or not approve it with our setback.
But what I'm getting at is our location, back to that point that you just made, the location we're having, we would not meet the code, because we would be coming for a variance, so the planning board would just have to condition.
Yes.
Any considerations they have, subject to a variance being requested.
Based on this board's.
Right, we would, well, we would grant the variance, and then they would approve the building.
Yep.
But not worry about the location, as long as it's where the variance allowed the building to be.
You wouldn't, you would go to the planning board.
Yep.
If the process were to continue, you'd go to the planning board with our approval based on the setbacks that we've agreed on.
Yep.
And then, they would have to recognize that this is where the, the structure has to be, and then move forward with their review and approval based on our contingent approval.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
So, which variance are we considering tonight?
So, all right, so, I think, for me, I, we, we've gone around on this quite a bit, um, I personally would like to take a look at, Josh, can you pull up the, um, the plan, uh, again? Um, because we do have to make a decision on a location if we are deciding to, to move forward with this. I'm, I'm hoping that we can move forward with this, there's three locations that were provided, and during the presentation, uh, there was a option to, um, slide, you know, keep the five-foot setback and then slide it basically along that, that line, if you will. Um, the current option, or the, the original option, is to keep it in line with the front of the house. Option one is back about seventeen feet from the front of the house, not, uh, not in line with the back of the house, as per the, the code requires. Option two is fifteen feet off of the, uh, side setback, which, uh, would not require a side setback variance, but it is, uh, it looks like about five or six feet off of the front of the house. Um, m- me personally, when I was out there, I, on the plan view, I was originally wanting option two, however, when I was out there, um, I was looking more for option one or something in between, I don't wanna, uh, take down a, a nice, large maple tree, but I do want the building setback from the front of the house, um, I think there was a, a comment of three feet, which I'm okay with.
I think.
Uh, you know, just again, getting that hierarchy of a, an accessory building versus the, the main house. So, for me, having it pushed back about three feet from the front of the house is where I would like it to be placed, versus, um, the preferred option.
So, a forty-three foot front setback as opposed to the?
Yes.
Forty point four.
And you wanted, how far off the side setback?
Fi- I'm fine with the five.
Five?
Five makes the most sense.
I agree, I mean, when I went out there, actually from the plan view, I liked option one.
Right.
Myself, I think that works best.
The original.
Right, well, at least five feet off, I think it works better further back from the house as well.
Any comments or thoughts, Don, or?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the, the five foot, um, that keeps it closer to the line, not out in the middle of the yard. So, it stands out. And, does it have to go back to full seventeen? If you wanna save the tree, probably not.
Right.
Well, I think the proposal's for forty-three feet.
Yeah, versus forty, forty point four, forty three point four.
Right. Yeah, whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Good with that? Yeah. All right, um, with that, um.
With that. That is the best placement as far as you're concerned as well.
Okay.
Did we do seeker?
No, we haven't done seeker yet, can we?
Please.
All right, uh, I make a motion for a type two action under seeker pursuant to NYCR section six one seven point five of the environmental, uh, code.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Crane, you wanna take the, uh?
If I can find my crypt notes.
Condition?
Um. I think we've made it less out of character with the neighborhood, there's sheds all over the place, um, not a lot of accessory structures, but I think it will be aesthetically, um.
Acceptable.
Acceptable, thank you, to the neighborhood, um, it will be, not be a detriment created to nearby properties, the most impacted neighbor is the neighbor directly to the north, who is actually at this meeting this evening, speaking that they are in agreement with the placement of the building. Um, we have reviewed all of the other methods and locations with which to place the building, and having analyzed, um, eliminating the side setback or pushing it as far back as possible, this is the best location for aesthetics within the neighborhood, and also to preserve the current vegetation and the large maple tree. Um, the request is somewhat substantial, but given this is a corner lot, the backyard is extremely shallow, um, I don't think there's any place on this lot where an accessory structure could be placed that would fulfill all of the setbacks of the code for an accessory structure. Um, no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood, it, it is self-created, but then again, it is a corner lot, so you're, you're stuck with the lack of real estate that you have, um, if your front were actually Mill Creek, you'd have plenty of room to stick it in the backyard of the house, it would be no less visible to anybody else, but it wouldn't require a variance to be located there. Um, and I'll say this will be a desirable change, because it will neaten up the parcel in allowing the applicant to have room to put some of the material that's currently stored outside, under the roof and inside the barn, and, I'm sorry, the accessory building, and therefore clean it up a little bit. Um, any other?
That's contingent upon?
Well, I didn't make a motion, yeah, those are just my findings.
Those are the findings. I think you covered it.
Um. Okay.
Yep.
So, then with that, I will make a motion to grant an area variance at six seventy-one Willow Lane to allow a side setback of five feet from the north property line, and a front setback from the east property line of forty-three feet.
Forty-three point four.
Forty-three point four or forty-three?
It says forty-three, I.
Says forty-three point four, so.
Forty-three point four, okay. Um, from the front, which is the east, to allow the placement of a five hundred.
One thousand square foot.
Well, one thousand square foot accessory structure with a five hundred foot.
Footprint.
Footprint, thank you. Um, detached wood frame structure on a point four six acre parcel, SBL zero six five point thirteen dash two dash eleven, located in an R three, single-family residential district. And then, um, granting of your permit will be conditioned upon approval by the planning board, and then the variance will be conditioned, one year meaningful construction, and all necessary government approvals.
That to be used for living, uh, space?
Oh, true.
And not to be used for commercial purposes?
Correct.
Second.
I will, I will.
Yep.
Sorry.
What'd I miss?
So, this is conditioned upon the approval of the planning board?
Correct.
Yep.
And in the event that it is later determined that planning board approval is not necessary. The matter has to come back before the board, this board, zoning board, with a complete application that includes the cost structure of the building. So, the board can pass a judgment on, on the, on that issue as it's part of the application.
Cost and design?
Materials?
Yep.
Okay.
Cost, design, materials?
Yep.
Which they would have to make to appear for the board anyhow.
Correct, so they, you'll already have all that.
They'll hope they already have it, if they determine that, that they don't have any jurisdiction over it, it gets back to us, then we would be able to look at that and make a decision.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
If you got that.
Did you get all that?
Mm-hmm.
Good, second.
Your second?
Oh, did you already get a second?
Yeah, okay.
Uh.
All right, Mrs. Walla?
Aye.
Oh, you don't wanna do, Mr. Short?
Aye.
Mr. Lagnor?
Aye.
Mr. Houser?
Aye.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
All right, uh, you have your, uh, variance, uh, you have to go to the planning board for, there, what's that?
There are two variances.
You have your, yes, you have both variances, yes.
Yes. So, forty-three point four feet to the front, five feet side setback.
Yep, you have to go to, uh, zoning board, or planning board, for approval from them, uh, this is contingent upon all building applicants, and you have one year, uh, to complete the project.
One year to complete the project from the completion of the planning board, or from here?
One year start of meaningful construction.
Start, yeah, one year to start.
You have one year to start. Meaningful construction.
Okay, so after the building permit?
No.
One year start of meaningful construction from this meeting, but you should have all of the other approvals long before then.
I hope so.
Dig a hole.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, next up, uh, we have twelve forty-six Stafford Crescent Garage Edition.
Okay, want me to reread it?
Please.
Twelve forty-six Stafford Crescent Garage Edition, located at twelve forty-six Stafford Crescent. Applicant Bob Peters is requesting area variances to allow a front and side setback less than what is required, associated with the construction of a two hundred forty-five square foot, three bay extent, third bay extension to an existing garage, a point four one acre parcel, having SBL number zero six five point one three dash, three dash sixty, located in an R three, single-family residential district, under section three five zero dash twelve of the code of the town of Webster.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, just to give you a little quick review from last month, uh, I was here to, uh, for two variances on a two hundred and forty-five square foot addition to my two and a half car garage. One variance would be on the west side, which is, uh, fifteen feet normally, and I, I need to take that to nine feet, so I need six feet more. And then, uh, on the front of the property, it's a fifty-foot setback, and I need forty-six on that. And we went over all that, I. We went over all that, I think, and I, I handed prints, drawings and things, so you could see exactly what it looks like. Uh, question came up, could I move this structure back to the back part of the house? And we talked a little bit about, I have a patio there, I have kitchen windows there, and, and really wouldn't be something that I'd be interested in doing. So if it didn't go through, then I wouldn't be doing it. And, uh, Don, I saw you there today, looking, and I wasn't home, but I did see you.
I always go to the front though.
And I was gonna talk to you, but.
No problem.
Um, so, and, and the other thing we had talked about near the end of the, uh, discussion was that Monroe County Water has an easement between our two houses. And I would be building right up to that easement. Um, and then there could be a potential overhanging, uh, of my roof line. So I, I got a license from Monroe County Water Authority to be able to do that. And you didn't really wanna move forward on it until you saw something in writing, so I went to them and I, I sent the email to Catherine and, and explanation of, uh, what they said. And, and more or less, they say even if I did protrude, which I'm not going to, but if I did, I would have to redo the license. So the license is an ongoing type thing, I mean, if I get over more, then I gotta tell them and then they'll make me sign another license. So, um, basically that's where we're at, I guess, that was the last thing that you had asked me to do and I forwarded that, so I guess I need to ask you, do you have any more questions? And there was a legal thing, I think, too attached, I want, I think your attorney last time had mentioned about, he wasn't quite sure of the legal formality of the water authority, and the water authority came back and said there is no legal attachment to the town of Webster from the variance.
Right.
Just so that would be understood.
So just go back over, so your existing garage is twenty-two feet deep, you're looking for a garage that's twenty-six feet deep, you're looking to extend closer to the front of the, uh, property by four feet, uh, beyond what, um, beyond what the current house is. And you indicated the reason that you don't wanna go back was because that you have windows in the kitchen. The kitchen is on the other side of the garage, so at the end of the day, the windows would not be blocked in any way, shape or form. Um, it does, you know, this plan does indicate the bay window, so that window would not be blocked, there'd be about twelve feet between the window and the, um, the garage addition. Um, and that window is actually ten feet back from the back of the garage, so that window still wouldn't be blocked because it would only be back about four feet. So, talk to me the reason why you don't wanna go back.
Okay, that, that's, uh, there is another window there, which is the, the bathroom window, which would be covered up.
Okay, that's good, I don't like people looking at me while I'm using the restroom anyway.
Well, you'd be surprised how you sit there and look outside, you know, so, but anyway. Um, if we did bring it back, it's gonna be more cost for me to be able to do the roof structure and everything, to bring everything back. I did look at it and we did look it over, and, uh, so just didn't make sense to us financially to do that. It's, it's easier to construct it the way it is now and just go out four feet with a little group off the front. And, um, I did send a drawing to you to show you what it looked like aesthetically, and it's gonna be great, it's all gonna be cedar sided and match the house. Um, the doors, the garage doors are gonna be new, but they'll be all the same, it's good. I went around to eight of my neighbors, I could've went to more, and they all agreed, they, they have no problem with that. And, and they were very helpful about that, so, um, if I did find a neighbor that was really concerned about it, I probably wouldn't be here. And, uh, but they were all great about it. And, uh, so that's kinda where we're back, I mean, I, I could, you know, Michael, go back, and I, first thing I thought about doing is going back. But then I got the architect in there and we have to rip the whole roof off and it's twenty thousand dollars more to do that, so I'm, I'm better off maybe not, not doing that. So this is the easiest type of construction to do, what I wanna do is add this two hundred and forty-five square feet. And it's only nine feet more added to what I already have, but I have to have a fourteen inch bay, so I go back into the existing building, more feet there. Uh, actually five more feet to make the, the bay wide enough to, to accommodate cars and stuff.
Any other questions?
And walking aside today, I would agree, if we, if that garage was pushed back, it would make that twelve foot area very dark.
Mm-hmm.
Um, not only, uh, uh, if you're standing outside, but the, the windows, uh, would just, wouldn't give you a nice warm feeling, it would be dark and dingy.
Cave-like.
Yes, cave-like, thank you.
No concern with, uh, as far as I recall, when I drove by, uh, last month, all the other houses, the front of the house, nobody else is protruding forward. From it, there are other additions that are off to the side, uh, you know, other garage additions off to the side, but, um, I don't recall any other garages or any other components sticking further forward. And I drove the loop at least twice.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah.
Okay, the distance it's coming out is four feet?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Originally did this, ten years ago, I was gonna do this, I had the architect draw the drawings, and it was just gonna be like normal, setback two feet. And then I would only have twenty feet in there, but I'm actually putting in a lift to store my cars on, stack my cars on. And to do that and to get the garage door to be able to roll up, I had to be out so many feet so I could roll that door up and still have my lift inside, that's why I need twenty-six feet.
I, I really don't think that four feet's gonna be noticeable from the roadway, uh, plus the, the existing architectural style, it's, you know, steps out, steps out, steps out.
Yeah.
Well.
Oh yeah, it, it, it goes progressively further in the lot as you
Right.
As you move through it.
And looking at the front setbacks, as I go along Stafford Crescent, when I just pulled them up on the GIS maps, um, a lot of the subdivisions, if the setback is fifty feet, you can draw a line at fifty feet and all of the houses come right up to that line. Um, in this subdivision, they're staggered.
These are staggered?
Yeah.
So, I, I, I don't think it will look out of place just because they're not all in a nice neat line. Whereas when we do have a front setback on the nice neat line houses, it definitely stands out.
I don't think you're gonna notice that four foot bump out, as you're driving by it anyhow.
No, I, I think the four foot bump out would add a little architectural character to the house.
Alright, any other questions, comments from the board?
Are you okay with the licensing agreement, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, I look at it.
Okay.
The, uh,
Yeah, I'll open up to the public if anybody wants to speak for or against this project. Nobody? Alright, back to the board. Any final discussions? No? To Seeker? Make a motion for a type two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCR section six one seven point five of the environmental code?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody wanna read, uh, the findings? Chris?
Uh, the, uh, the project, uh, will not, uh, in effect the, uh, existing characteristics of the neighborhood. The relief requested is minimal. That, I got a cheat sheet there. Sorry, it's been a couple months. It's not out of character, it will not create, uh, any detriments to adjoining properties. Uh, the benefit based on the applicant's, uh, statement is not achievable by any other method and still allow him to enjoy the existing house and windows that are in the, uh, structure. The request is not substantial, there are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site, and while the difficulty is self-created, it once again is minimal, and I do believe this is a desirable change and that the request is not significant.
Thank you.
Sure, I, um, make a motion that we approve the, uh, the one two four six Stafford Crescent Garage Edition, uh, the area variances to allow front and side setback less than what is required associated with the construction of a two hundred forty-five square foot, um, third bay extension to an existing two-car garage on a zero point four one acre parcel, having SBL number zero six five point thirteen dash three dash sixty, located in R three, single-family residential district under section three fifty dash twelve of the code of the town of Webster.
The only thing I like to do is add the setback and the front setback, dimensions.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, it's forty-six feet for the front and, what was it?
Nine.
Nine feet for the side.
Second.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Lagnor?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye. You have your variance, um, you have, um, pursuant getting, obtaining building permit and, uh, one year's, uh, substantial, uh, project completion.
What, how long will it be before they pull the sign out of the front yard?
We'll arrange for that, it'll probably be sometime later this week.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, uh, forty-six, uh, Lake Road Residence.
Forty-six Lake Road Residence, located at forty-six Lake Road. Applicant Raymond Nanini is requesting area variances to allow setbacks less than what are required in association with the construction of a thirteen hundred thirty-three square foot family, single-family residence on a point zero nine acre parcel, having SBL number zero six three point zero nine dash one dash thirteen point one, located in, in WD Waterfront Development District under section three five zero dash eleven and three five zero dash twenty-five of the code of the town of Webster.
How's it going? Good evening, uh, Greg McMahon from McMahon Leroux, I'm representing Ray and Ron Benini, Benini, the owners of the property at forty-six Lake Road. Uh, the, our request is for, uh, first of all, the, their intent is to demolish the existing house and build a new home on that site. It's a, as many of the lots are down there on Lake Road, a narrow thirty-five foot wide lot. Uh, we're requesting, uh, side and front setback variances. Uh, I would note that we did appear before the board, uh, back in February of, uh, twenty-third of twenty twenty-one, and, and they did grant these variances, but we've been since that time, uh, struggling with the DEC to get the necessary permits to construct this house. We've finally reached a point where the DEC has accepted our plans. They published the notification in the Webster Herald, I believe that was last week, and then after a ten-day waiting period, then they'll be issuing the permit, uh, to build the house, so uh, we are through the block with the DEC, and that this, this time we wanted to come back and get these variants, hopefully get these variances re-approved.
Mr. McMahon, what was, what were the permits the DEC needed to grant you, just for the record?
Uh, well, this, this home, as all the homes are along there, are both in the coastal erosion hazard area and the structural hazard area. And to do any work, uh, you need a permit, but we filed a joint permit with the DEC, the Corps of Engineers and the Department of State. Uh, Department of State and the Corps of Engineers approved the project fairly quickly, but, um, the DEC, uh, because it's in the structural hazard area, only allows the expansion of the, of, of a structure by a certain amount. They actually wanted us to move it right up to the right of way of, um, Lake Road. We are asking for a thirty-five foot front setback and we were the, the sixty required. And, and one of the reasons is that we're adding a garage to the front, to the Lake Road side of this. Ron Benini, who lives in the house and will live in the new house, is disabled, and they were looking to get a garage so he can drive in and access what would be a very small, one-floor living area. There is a loft if he has company, but it'll be a, uh, the living area is, is one floor.
Okay, so basically they granted you the permit for the natural features area and, uh,
And the structural hazard area.
Hazard area.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
There was a variance from the DEC required to do any work within the structural hazard area, we did a, that was part of the permit.
Okay, thank you.
So with respect to anything that is being requested here, there's been no, other than the, uh, other than obtaining the variances of which you just spoke, spoke, there are no other changes relative to the previously approved variances?
There are none, no, we're asking for the same variances that were approved in twenty twenty-one. A fi- a four and a half foot side for both the east and west side, which actually, uh, in one case, the building, the current house is a little over a foot, uh, and four inches from one sideline now, and uh, so we're, we'll be opening up the space and, uh, but in order to center it in the lot, we'll have a four and a half foot setback on each side. A front setback off of Lake Road per code is sixty feet, and we're asking for thirty-five feet. And again, this is very similar to many of the homes, if you look at the homes on Lake Road, many of them have put these garage additions on the front of their homes. Uh, many homes down there have been reconstructed, um, with similar variances.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
We
Don, you guys, I'm assuming were, I wasn't here in the twenty-one when this came.
Yeah, no, we, um, the setbacks are consistent with many of the houses in the area that have been rebuilt, um, in the existing lot, primarily in the existing footprints. Um, with respect to the garage addition off the front, there've been at least two others in that area. One, um, further up the road at sixty-eight is significantly closer to the road than this one. And then the one at number forty is a little bit further setback, so this is striking the average between the two.
That's sixty-eight and forty, what do I know?
Four, forty, forty has one.
That, the house, the house at forty has one and the house at sixty-eight has one.
And you go further down, eighty-eight and ninety are closer to the road.
Yeah, and then the road gets much closer to the houses anyway as I go down.
Yep.
Okay, this one we did maybe ten years ago. Perfect guy.
Okay.
So it's, it's, it's aligned with, and it actually, by bringing it away from the east property line, and more set it, set, centering it within the lot, um, lining, more set it, centering it within the lot, it actually improves the spacing between the homes slightly.
The rear setback or lakeside setback roughly the same as what is currently?
It's actually less.
It's less.
That was, that was one of the sticking points with the DEC. We had to, the current house has a large deck on the lakeside. We had proposed a deck, we're cut back to about a six-foot wide deck right now. We had a.
A stairway?
With a stairway, yeah. That was, as I say, this was a real chore to get this through the DEC. There was a lot of concessions that had to be made to get to the point we're at right now.
Any other questions, concerns from the board? Nope. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody want to speak for or against the project? We got two individuals.
This'll be quick, 'cause I gotta get home and let my dogs out. I'm Jack Dwyer, and I'm in that little yellow house next to Ron's. And when, when Ron first started talking about doing something about his house, you know, that Sandbar is a pretty unique little community. Everybody gets along pretty well, and everybody knows exactly what everybody else is doing. And Ron was, just like anybody else would do there, he talked to his neighbors. And I said, there's an attorney here, so I want to make sure that you understand, Mr. DeMarco, that I'm not their representative, but I can assure you that over barbecues and a few beers and just talking with neighbors, everybody is enthusiastic about this property being changed. You all seem like really intelligent people. I take it most of you have seen that property? Okay, yeah, well, it's, it's just intuitively obvious to even a casual observer that something has to be done. And I, can I say something, Mr. DeMarco, can I say something off the record here?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. If you went in, if you ever went inside, I don't, I, sure, you would agree with me that that would, that house would never, ever get a certificate of occupancy. So it's, it's, it's a project that's desperately needed. And actually, more than that, Ron is a really decent guy, and he deserves to have a nice home. To your point, sir, he's, he's got some very serious health problems, and I think he should spend the rest of his life in a home on the lake that belonged to his family and such, and enjoy himself. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. My name's Dave Molecki, live in West Webster.
Can you speak up?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Dave Molecki, live in West Webster. I've been here before talking about the possibility of putting a pedestrian bridge at the outlet, and therefore, you know, all the properties there along that area of interest to me. The one thing I'm here to ask about is what is the width of the property?
Based on the plans, thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet?
Yep.
Yeah, that's like property line to property line?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not very wide, right?
No, it's not. Small in this room.
Well, I'm wondering about public access. My understanding is Webster has zero footage of beach, public access? Certainly in this area?
Further down the road, I think. Now with the park, I think we have some access.
Oh, Webster Park?
Not Webster Park, no.
Portions of Sandbar Park.
Sandbar Park.
I haven't seen any beach there, but okay, perhaps. Anyways, it'd be nice to have a public beach there, like there is on the Rondacote side. That's one of the reasons why I like the idea of the bridge. And when you go up to Charlotte, there's actually something they call the hidden, the hidden walkway, behind the houses by the lake. And I was just reading the portion in the town code there about waterfront districts, and it does mention, you know, the possibility of putting walkways as close to the lake as possible. My question is, on the lakeside, when I walk on the pier right now, I see some private property signs that are in questionable place. I don't know if you guys have looked at that, but please look at it at some point. It has nothing to do with this property, but just, just so you look at it. And my question is, in the future, would it be possible to put some sort of public access coming in from the pier across all of those properties, including this one? So that's the question for you guys. As far as this property here, I have no comment for or against it.
Thank you. Attorney, it's a little bit beyond our scope work tonight, but I appreciate the comments, and we'll take those into consideration.
Yeah. And first, what relates to this is the possibility of a walkway between wherever this property ends in the lake at some point.
Yep. Thank you. All right, with that, public, anybody else, public comments? Nope? Bring it back to the board, final discussion. Any other comments on the board?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
All right. Needing to, Seeker, make a motion for a type-two action under Seeker pursuant to NYCRR, section six-one-seven-point-five of the Environmental Code?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody want to do the findings? Done?
Well, in lieu of that this application has received the variances, and the variances being requested have not changed since nineteen, I'm sorry.
Two thousand.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I would have the same conditions. The applicant is certainly much farther along in having received all his permits from DEC, the Army Corps of Engineers. I would basically make a motion to grant approvals for forty-six Lake Road to, I'm sorry, to the applicant requesting the area variances for the setbacks on the sides being four-point-five, I believe?
Yes.
Yep.
Four-point-five on each side.
On each side.
Thirty-five. Thirty-five foot for a front setback.
And can we adopt the section of the minutes and the findings from the February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one zoning board meeting? Because this has already been previously approved, but it expired based on DEC taking.
And most importantly, there's been no.
And there's been no changes.
Changes, yes. And this is associated with the construction of a one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three-foot square foot single-family residence on a zero-point-nine acre parcel having SPL number zero-six-three-point-zero-nine-dash-one-dash-one-three-point-one, located in Waterfront Development District under section three-fifty-dash-eleven and three-fifty-dash-twenty-five of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Second. Mr. Houser?
Aye.
Mrs. Vola?
Aye.
Mr. Leibner?
Aye.
Mr. Santola?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye. You have, you have your variance. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Let's see, who else do I have? Is there any other administrative matters? Board minutes for May fourteenth? Nope? Nope? Okay. Table that for next meeting. With that, I motion to end the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.